We're all extremely busy.
Hmm.
Good afternoon. It is now 2:05 PM and we are beginning our briefing meeting. Thank you to those of you who are here from our advisory committees to give us your reports. We really do appreciate your taking time out of your day. And we get to begin with you. Let you know that one board member, Dr. Cuckel, will not be able to attend this meeting, but Ms. Giavinelli and Ms. Fisher are on their way and they will be here shortly due to previous commitments. All right, we're going to begin with our advisory committee reports and we're going to begin first with the District Advisory Council, otherwise known as DAC.
I don't see Cindy.
Missing, okay, we're going to skip. Oh, Andy's here. There you are.
Good afternoon, board members.
Is the mic on?
Mr. Martin, Dr. Atkins.
I'm Andy Erickson. I'm the vice chair of DAC. The chairman couldn't be here today. It was my pleasure. I'll give you the report that she had. The November DAC meeting legislative update. Chris Patricia, a board member. Robert Dotid, the staff attorney. School Board's 218 priorities. Funding for a pilot program addressing recruitment and retention of teachers using a career ladder of educators, minority recruitment tools, and a grow-your-own model for recruitment. Amend the High Growth Capital Outlay Fund, providing state funding for classrooms and to include Lee County as one of the fastest-growing districts. Lee County Standards for Excellence. Brandy Amachia, Director of Elementary Curriculum and Instructional Innovation. Lizanne Thomas, Rebecca Mendez, and Jeanette Walsh, and Mark McCreary, Professional Development and Leadership Specialists. Standards to identify the standards most critical for college and career readiness are being developed. Created Diamonds of Differential. To better detail what the standard looks like, strategies to support students who have not yet mastered the standard and enrichment for students who have mastered the standard. Questions submitted after the presentations have been answered. This information can be found in the minutes. The January DAC meeting on January 17th. Board update. Chris Patricia. Lee County community was greatly affected by Hurricane Irma, still rebuilding. Half-cent sales tax initiative. Six out of seven board members expressed support at the January 16 workshop. Encouraged members who live in gated communities to reach out to their homeowners associations about having a school board member present at a future meeting. Capital Plan update. Dr. Amy Desamore. After a brief update on the capital plan, Dr. Desamore answered questions about the halfpenny sales tax initiative.
Hey, Andy. Can I interrupt for a minute?
Yes.
You don't need to read the whole thing because we have that in our minutes. What I'd really like to know from you more particularly is, how is the DAC as we're moving forward? Are we moving in a direction that you as the leaders in DAC, because you've been on the executive committee for quite some time, and we were talking about trying to update the, improve the paradigm where we're actually getting the board is communicating to the DAC that's getting down to the SACS, to the schools. Can you explain to me a little bit where you think we are and where you think we should be to make us, to help us, help you make the DAC more effective?
Well, the first thing I find that it is helpful that when we get something from the school board, something they're looking for, something they'd like to look into, and we do that. We instruct our, we're divided in three subcommittees into elementary, middle, and high school. We instruct them to go back to their subgroups and talk about these issues and see what kind of ideas they come up with. We also instruct them to go back to their SACS and to talk about it amongst their SACS and then come back with more information from the SACS. Not everybody does that, but at least then you got the word out there and you're trying to do it. I don't have any idea if I did, I would already have said it. I'm a very outspoken person. So, I don't feel that there's something that you can do that would be any better than you're doing now.
One of the things that, and this is a question and conversation kind of, at one time our SACS were very involved in giving us feedback about what they believed that we needed to be working on as well. And I fear that we may not have, that that's not always happening. We're giving a lot of information, but we need to hear what your, everybody's concerns are from the SAC and what people within the community. And I believe that's a missing component that we have, which also may contribute, this is, that goes to a question to you, Andy. Do you believe that oftentimes at the SAC meetings and at DAC, there's so much focus on giving out information and that we're not spending time getting feedback from the people?
Actually, you hit the nail on the head as far as that's concerned. I have been speaking up in our executive meetings to try to cut down the timing or not doing multiple speakers of information so the groups have time, plenty of time to go back and not just have to talk about something that somebody brought up, either superintendent brought up that he'd like to know or something the board brought up, but actually information coming back from the SACS. One thing that's holding back some of it, and I represent a school that does that, actually I go to another school that does the same thing, they're meeting like quarterly.
Ah, yeah.
So, you know, you have a parent, and I've said this a long time, that you have a parent go up there and they have something they want to bring up that's a district issue, not just a principal. And they want to do it in January and you don't have a meeting to March. Well, by then they've either got frustrated or forget it. So then you lose SAC members because of that. So, I've been trying to push that to be more of mandatory to have it once a month. It's just too long for people to wait longer than once a month.
Right. So, what I'm wondering is if that may be giving us an indication about what we need to do within the district with our SAC liaison person who does the training for our schools and so on, to see if maybe we need to relook and make sure that we're maybe kind of going back to what we used to do when we had more community input, because now I fear that we focus so much on data that a lot, when I go to the SAC meetings, I get data given to the members, but I don't hear the members talking about concerns and things they want to bring forward. And I also hear what the school has planned. I hear all of those things, but I'm not hearing from community members about their involvement and what they would like to see happen. Not a negative piece, but I don't know.
I hear you and I will take that back to executive and talk about it.
All right. Because we, yeah. Because it could be something that needs to be handled on the district end to help look at that structure. Dr. Atkins, do you understand, what do you, give me your thoughts on this. I'm just working around it, so please forgive me.
No, that's fine. I understand the, I understand the concept. I think it's a balance, however, you know? I think that you have to, there is certainly a place for data and the sharing of the direction of the school and then, you know, obviously an opportunity for parents and community members to share their concerns. And I think, you know, one of the things that individual SACS that buildings kind of take on the culture of that building, and so we try to work with our school administrators to make that a very active, vibrant part of the school community. And where you see it, working as such, I think it's very beneficial to the school. And that's also where you see a lot of participation, I believe. So, you know, it's certainly, you know, an issue that we want to encourage parental involvement, but we also want to, in that involvement, we want to be able to accomplish both missions. You know, I think providing the data and direction of the school so that everybody understands where the school's going, but also an opportunity to provide input for improvement, so.
Can I make one more comment?
Absolutely.
On the issue of where they're meeting not once a month, I've talked to the principals of a couple of different schools and same comment seems to come up. They say, "Well, there's nothing going on this month, so, you know, we don't have that much going on, so therefore we don't want a meeting." There's, because if they feel they don't have an agenda, then they shouldn't have a meeting, shouldn't call people in. But again, they don't know what the public's going to bring in. That's how I feel. So, thank you.
And I'm thinking ideally those agendas need to come from the SAC, not, you know, to help. I'm sorry, Ms. Maureen?
No, that's okay. I'm forgetting, I think we had this conversation once before about streaming the DAC meetings so that people could participate from home and that might generate some interest. And I'm also thinking about streaming the, if there's some way to stream the SAC meetings, you might get more participation and certainly more feedback.
I've heard that a lot.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, because people, it's very hard for people when it's during the day. For many people who work and have businesses, it needs to be in the evening. And so, yeah. It's something that we need to, and maybe that would be, maybe that's something we need to, at the DAC when they go in their breakout sessions, to get feedback from them about, you know, some ideas from them and some recommendations to help along those lines. I don't know.
Let me look into the streaming piece and get back with you.
Okay. Yeah, and I'm also wondering if some of the presentations could be, where we could provide a link to the presentation that was given at the DAC or that people can go to, that a school could on their website go, you know, when they do the parent link, you know, send it out for people to get that information. And maybe if we had that available, maybe we could cut down some of our presentations at the DAC and spend more time in the groups.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Andy.
Thank you, Andy. Construction Advisory Committee.
Is it on? All right. My name's Darren Watkins. I'm the vice chair of the Construction Advisory Committee. Our vice chair couldn't make it today. So, a couple of things we've talked about. January meeting, we had a presentation on the RFQ selection process. Just a couple of things, some notes on that where we had, where architectural and the CM are, requirements are the same for the RFQ process and that we're doing a weighted, 2% weighted for within a 200-mile driving radius from, for the, from the local office to the job site. A couple of other things. That every job that y'all are going to do, it has to run through the RFQ process and the architect is required to attend all project meetings. So, and then on the construction projects on the January meeting, we talked about Mr. Reckenbacher, hope I said his name right, did an update on the Benita High School. Construction is on schedule. The total cost savings from direct material purchases have returned a little over $722,000 back to the district and that they are scheduled to be completed before the start of the 2018 school year except for minor punch list items and that he's invited everybody to come visit the construction site. Yes, sir.
And we're waiting for that final number to be way under what everybody else does in the state of Florida. So, you know, Mr. Reckenbacher has, I know he was here earlier, but he's got his, yeah, he's got his target that we want to be the best, you know, as far as value engineering in the state so that, you know, when people talk about Benita Middle or Benita High School, it's not, you know, that we did, you know, that our initial number didn't come out right, but when the rubber meets the road, we want to see who did the best.
Yeah, we do it right.
And we're holding you guys accountable for that, too.
That means you hold, you hold them accountable. You dig in your heels.
And on Triple M, Mr. Blerton gave an update on that. They've had many meetings with all the communities around the Gateway area. They have both positive comments and for the future and of that school. State Route 82 is on schedule to be completed before the open date of 2021 and the permitting from the Army Corps went in in October of 2017 and that's still at the Army Corps currently. The pre-construction design process will be completed before going to the board with a total project cost after they select the CM. Lee High Senior High School, there is six months of design and eight months of construction, so that will be open by August of 2019. And once the additions complete, the additional portables will be added to the existing portables for the ninth graders from Triple M. Also, we are, at our meeting in January, we talked about we are going to be moving to a 10- to 12-month schedule, meeting schedule, so we can meet all year long since construction happens all year long.
Yeah, good.
In our February meeting, we had a big discussion on the sales tax initiative. A lot of, a lot of the feedback from the meeting is they need, I know it was presented as a PhD level, it needs to be brought down to a fundamental level to get out to parents so they know, you know, layman terms. That also there is a Pennies for Community Progress is also asking for a half-cent sales tax on the same ballot, so that will be, I believe, an issue going forward. That we need to start early now and plant the seed and spreading the word regarding sales tax. I had mentioned that we need to try to get a school board member out to all the SAC meetings or the PTO meetings and do a presentation, you know, a brief presentation on the sales tax thing because a lot of students or a lot of parents and even faculty does not know the whole, everything about it. So, there's that. And then, pretty much just to sum it up that, and that's about it. I mean, you have everything else, but that's about it for our committee meeting and.
Yeah, and thank you if you did a good job filling in for Ryan. You know, the Construction Advisory Committee was very candid about the sales tax, saying, "Look, you know, people have to know what's in it for me." And they were very brutal, saying, you know, "We're not, we have to be forceful." And they were all willing to say, "How can we help?" And so, this last time when, you know, I gave that speech back in February, Chris and Robert Dotid came in this last meeting and said it again. And so they were kind of, you know, coming to the wolves because they were, this team was already pretty prepped on it. But they did a really good job. But one of the things that Chris said that I want to throw out to the board that really I think that the committee really liked was the fact that, you know, "We're last, but we need to be first." And it was the proverbial saying, "Let those who be last be first." And to really put that message out to the voters that, you know, "When you get your ballot, don't look at it, you know, flip it over, go to the end. The first thing you should vote on is what's last on the ballot, which is us. Put us as yes and then go through and, through the, wade through all the stuff. And if we start doing that as a mantra, where people know that that's, you know, first thing you do, because I got people, you know, when I voted, you know, people were in the line going, "Who's running for school board?" I mean, they didn't even know, you know, and they're standing in line to vote and they didn't even know the names and, so, but if they have in their head, flip it over, go to the back, last thing first, take care of the school district, take care of your community, and then the rest of this stuff, you know, we'll help you, wade through that if you need help, but you're kind of on your own. But I think that's something that we, I would like to talk about and I think the construction committee liked that. When Chris said it, it really, I saw the reactions and I liked it and I, so I wanted your opinion on what you thought about that as well.
It's, I mean, yeah, I mean, that's, the biggest thing is we need to go out and to, you know, community, community meetings, Rotary meetings, all those meetings, because I've talked to people about it and they don't, they don't even know that, they don't read the news, they don't watch, they don't watch the news, so unless they know about it, nobody knows about it.
I need to clarify that I did not say that. That comes from the Book of Matthew.
Okay.
I did not say that. And I did consult my faith formation director at my church to see if it was appropriate for me to use that in reference to the sales tax. And she said, "Absolutely, this is about children and lifting children up in our community."
That's right.
So, yeah. Can't take credit for that.
Well, there's also the, the other part in the Gospels that talks about he who would hinder a child, it would be better for them to have a millstone and be thrown into the waters. So, there you go.
Okay.
Darren, I just want to thank you for being here and let you know that several of us have been out to the schools already. And even talking with principals that when we've had some of the SAC meetings, I know for mine, it's not been small, but they're wanting to see what they can do to band together to educate people. Educate people not just about this, but educate people about the need to vote. And also working to make sure we have people from elections office whenever we have those pieces. And Darren, I would also like to point out to you that there's this lovely lady over there by the name of Denise Carlin, and I'm just going to let you guys know, Darren also is with Alva Inc. And so, we're wanting to be here.
Yes, we need to, and well, I would like to have somebody come out and do a presentation for the SAC and PTO at the April meeting coming up, so, for Alva, at the Alva School.
At the Alva School.
At the Alva School, yes.
I think somebody's writing that down, so I believe that we will make sure.
Darren, well, and I'll talk to Stacia and we'll get that set up that runs the SAC.
Yes, thank you.
One more comment. Paul, did you hear they're meeting year-round? I think they're throwing down the gauntlet to see which committee will be the more hard-working committee. Shall we take that challenge?
Absolutely.
I think several, there are several committees. I know that at one time curriculum advisory talked about that and I would not be surprised if that happens. I know that looking at Dr. Creel's plan for where we're going to be by 2030, we are going to be a 24/7, 365, almost 365 days a year that our schools are going to be in use. And so, it's time for us to all put on, let's all put our ever-ready batteries in and be the bunny. So, thank you so much.
Thanks, Darren.
And if you want any information about raising billy goats, Darren is the one to go to because he has prize billy goats in his yard.
Mr. Coober knows about billy goats. Yes, I do.
I, um.
Yes, sir.
That's the wonderful thing about getting to know people in our community. That's the part I love about what we do, besides the kids. Kids come first and then comes everything else. Continuous Systemic Improvement Advisory Committee. Betsy Vaughn, thank you for being here.
Good afternoon, board, and Dr. Atkins and Mr. Martin. I'm Betsy Vaughn. I was elected last month as the new chair for the CSI committee. I know that you have the full report that Ms. McClung prepared for you, so what I'm going to do is just touch on a couple of things that I thought were particularly important. At our November meeting, Dr. Helen Martin, the Assistant Director of Professional Development, excuse me, discussed the restructuring of that department and what the department is doing to provide support for teachers. The goal of the department, one of the most important goals, is to increase the retention of effective and highly effective employees. And of course, that relates directly to one of the four overarching goals of Vision 2020. So I thought that was really important. I took the liberty of adding a couple of notes that I had from my own notes from that meeting and it's very, very important, and I know I'm preaching to the choir here on this, but that we really, really focus on this retention issue. One of the other things that was mentioned in that report from Dr. Martin was that in fiscal year 2017, Lee County had a 23% turnover rate and that compares to a 16% rate nationwide. And we add 500 to 700 new teachers a year. Now, of course, part of that is because this is such a quickly growing district, but we do still have, you know, the boomers, a lot of them entered when I entered teaching. We have a lot of people. We have a lot of people retiring at this point, and we have people moving to other positions and just resigning from, from teaching. Because of this, you know, we, a lot of people, and I'm, I'm saying this mostly for audience members that might be listening to this, it's, it's a huge financial drain, but it's also, it also affects school stability in many cases and student achievement. So, especially if a teacher leaves mid-year, and that actually happened to my granddaughter who attends school in Cape Coral. In January, we continued as a committee to look at strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats, the SWOT analysis, again, you have the whole report. We came up with lots of things in our committee. The one area that I wanted to call attention to was their 13 bulleted points under weaknesses, and if you look at those, and I highlighted some of them, I found that more than half of those that committee members came up with had specifically had to do with factors that affect teacher retention. So that's just kind of a double underscoring of how important as a committee we feel that this is. And finally, we were looking at external threats, and that's perhaps the hardest. I'm, I'm glad to hear that Ms. LaRiviere brought up some questions and, and ideas and comments about engaging the community. I, I really feel that the school district does an excellent job addressing parents, or communicating with parents, but we have a lot of people out in the community, as we said in the other report, that are totally clueless. And we have a lot of retirees that live in Lee County, and I'm one of the unusual ones that actually has family here and grandchildren, but a lot of the retirees have retired here from other parts of the country, and they kind of feel like, "Hey, I've done my thing with schools," and they don't understand how schools impact the community and, and their lifestyles. And finally, and this is not a surprising external threat, government entities other than the school board. Our committee brought up the Lee County Commission, which often doesn't seem to be very cooperative with desires from the school board. The state local legislation, legislative delegation, which I don't think, nor did people on this committee think that they were being friends to public education here in Lee County. And I sigh at this one. And our friends, the lawmakers in Tallahassee, as I know you know, they just wrapped up that session, and once more, the trend of the last quite a few years sabotaging public education. So these are the things that concerned us the most, and you have the rest of the report. So, does anybody have any questions, comments, or anything that you wanted to ask me?
Dr. Atkins?
This is just a, just a comment, one of the things that you see from Dr. Martin's presentation, you mentioned teacher retention is, is a critical issue, and one of the things that she refers to are teachers leaders and professional development leadership specialists. And I, I had the opportunity, just this past week, to visit several of our schools. One of them was East Lee County High School, and I have to compliment the work of Academic Services out there. Misty Neal, who's a PDNL specialist, was actually out in a biology classroom, and, and I got an opportunity to see her teach, and what was really neat is I got to step back and kind of sit next to the teacher and watch her in action. And they were doing a spiraling activity where they're coming back into a, to content that they had previously covered, but were coming back, which is a great learning technique, you know, to, you have that for time where a kid might forget a little bit, and then they can come back and review, and it really helps for that deep learning to, to take hold. But here's a master teacher presenting to a biology class and a, a teacher of, that had less experience having the opportunity to watch a master teach. And, and as a former science teacher myself, it was neat for me to be able to sit back and watch another master, a true master science teacher present content, and I'm sitting here thinking, "Man, I would use that, I would use that." You know, she, she gave a, a little example of, you know, chromosomes, where you talk about how many come from the mom, how many come from dad, and think Michael Jordan, 23, and just, just really, just really neat techniques that you, you don't get those things from college, but to sit there and watch somebody that is truly a master in your classroom with your kids is, is stuff that helps build capacity. You know, I was talking to the school principal, she said, "Right now, we're in, we're in that, that tough time of year where we don't have the time to, to take time outside of here to build capacity, but when they're sitting here working with these professionals, it does just lend itself to building that capacity just naturally." Went to another classroom, another, another specialist in there with the teacher, they were doing a hands-on lab with parts of the plant, and it was just neat to see that, you know, they, that, that learning taking place that can really take place when kids can actually touch it, feel it, see it, and also, again, this is one of these where one of the, the teacher leaders or PDNL specialists is in the classroom with those teachers, helping them impart lessons, and they're learning from the teachers as they're teaching kids that are their kids. So it was just great to see that, and I think those are the types of things that, you know, Academic Services does that really helps us with our, really our mission to try to retain more of our teachers.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm glad you pointed that out, because that was one part of the report. And as, as someone who has mentored many newbies and coordinator to student teachers, that's so important, because those people coming in, and a lot of them are, are 40s, 50s years old, because we have, we're making good use of the career changers, but all of those people need that extra scaffolding and support. And I, I want to add that besides the teacher leaders, teachers are the best support for other teachers. You, you need a buddy next door, and, and that's not just for the newbies, that's, that's for a lot of the teachers that are feeling overwhelmed. Anything else that...
Any questions?
Okay, thanks.
Okay, next we will be hearing from Curriculum Advisory Committee, April Katron.
And as a teacher leader, thank you very much for your support. Today, I have some information from our Curriculum Advisory Committee meetings, starting back in November. We had Joe Campantura, who is also a teacher leader. My co-chairman led the board that, that month, and it was Mr. Toiber's last meeting as he passed the torch over to Kathleen Morgan, and she joined our committee in January. Two concerns that the board had brought up was that they wanted the curriculum committee to discuss how curriculum is affected through the growing district and funding, and also that we didn't have enough qualified teachers. We had a presentation that evening from Jeff Estes, who is the principal at Benita Springs High School. He gave us some information about AVID and spoke to the, the College Academy that's available for students in 11th grade, and is also used as a recruitment tool. In addition, Carl Burnside, principal of Dunbar High School, spoke to us about college and career readiness and soft skills, which was an issue that our curriculum committee wanted to know more about, is how the district was supporting our students with soft skills and in the community. Mr. Burnside also spoke to us about how Chico's is a wonderful partner with us, and how they come to the school and do formal interviews and practice with students who are looking for jobs in the future. Our next steps, and please forgive me, I've been sick, so, our next steps were college and career readiness, what did it mean, and then also students that were struggling with testing. So in January, Ms. Morgan joined us, and she gave us a very detailed report about the kind of public education that we all would like to have, the taxes and how we can support our district. She also talked to us about the County Commission and the legislation that had been brought forward with a bill from the state. In addition, we had a presentation from Lori Halchen, who is here this afternoon, Director for Middle School Curriculum, and she gave us information about Vision 2020 and STAR, and explained FSA and all the testing that we're using throughout the district. But the testing over the years has grown, and using the STAR program consistently, K through 12, has provided a consistency that our district had been looking for. We also discussed how the state of Florida has a very extensive review process, including statisticians from other parts of the nation, FSA's validity, reliability, and other statistics, and how the results satisfied national testing through their experts. The second presentation that's this evening, or that evening, sorry, was the Science Textbook Adoption. Rob Stratton from, who is the Coordinator for Instructional Technology and Instructional Materials, brought three members, teacher leaders and PDLSSs, to speak to us about the new science curriculum. Heidi Brennan, who is a PDL Specialist for Elementary Science, spoke to all of our members and shared some of the information for the elementary curriculum. Daniel Knapp, who is also a PDL Specialist for Middle School Science Textbook Adoption, gave her reasons and their selections. And then finally, Misty Neal from East Lee County High School and the high school side gave us some more information about the science curriculum. We did, at the end of that meeting, have a motion to support the curriculum team. However, at the end of the meeting, we were running out of time, so we had two motions on the table. And unfortunately, in our February meeting, we didn't have a quorum to vote on that motion, so I cannot bring that forward to you as far as supporting the science curriculum, but we will be looking at it at our meeting this month in March when we get back from spring break. So, we are charged as a curriculum committee to make some very strong decisions, and with Ms. Morgan's support, we'll take the challenge, and I'll bring it to the committee about meeting 12 months instead of the months that we meet now, because like our other committees have said, curriculum is non-stop through the summer. Teachers are still working, and we still need to have a consistent coherent curriculum for our district moving forward. Any other, any questions?
Ms. Morgan?
Now, I'll just comment, first of all, April does a terrific job running, running the committee. I'm really impressed at her skills, so if anybody's looking for someone to do training for new committee chairs, April is the person to talk to, because she takes it very seriously, and she really keeps the group working on their goals and focused, which I think is terrific. The conversation they had about the, the science textbooks, I thought was really interesting, because it broke down into, "Are we going to validate the process or the books?" And essentially, what the group agreed was, "It's not our job to evaluate the books, because that's being done by the, the various book committees, but it is our job to say that we have confidence in the process that's in place." And so, that was, that was a good discussion. So, I'm enjoying being part of this committee, because this is probably the weakest area for me in terms of the school district, so it's a good committee. Thank you, April.
Yes, sir. Mr. Toiber?
And I, I concur with Ms. Morgan, as far as Ms. Katron, as far as what she does is exemplary, but also the entire committee, I mean, we have a really powerful group that represents there, and I, I think it's important that Dr. Creel spend time with you, and, I mean, she's got a plan that is a, a, it's a big plan, and it's going to take, I think, a lot of your assistance to, because it's a culture change, and it's a, it's a, it's a, it's a step up, and I, and I think that that's a good synergy, and I encourage it, and I, and I think you're going to need the year-round summer, because the deadlines that she's putting on are quite aggressive, and I'm sure she could use your help in some way or fashion.
And Dr. Creel actually came to our February meeting, that will be in our next presentation to you, but she did a wonderful job, her and, for teacher leaders, Ms. Martin came and spoke to us also, and they did a wonderful explanation of where we're going in the future with curriculum.
Great, super.
I just concur, April, you do a great job of, of that. And she was hesitant to do, to be the chair.
I know.
It's the first time she was, and she, I think one of the things that makes a difference in a chair is that she has a passion for it, but also the fact that she's not a person who's all about me. She's all about the job and what, the task that needs to be done. So I think, you know, that, that's very good, and I appreciate all that the Curriculum Advisory does, and I am so disappointed, but I will say flu. February was awful for flu. And so hopefully, it was illness and not a lack of commitment to the committee. So, thank you.
Thank you.
And, let's see, moving on, we're going to Equity and Diversity Advisory Committee. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Michelle Freeman, and I am speaking for our acting chair, which is Leila. She sends her regards, she's ill today. EDAC met in December, January, and February. In December, Rebecca Brown and Robin Frink both presented, and they discussed the difference between 504s and IEPs, qualification services, and the services that students are provided. In January, Ms. Sarah Thompson presented information on restorative practices. She discussed the reduction in referrals, also the district-wide reduction in minority students for insubordination. In February, Shelley Taylor, Coordinator of Academic Student Support Services, discussed graduation rates and trends, and also Vision 2020 to focus on increasing the graduation rate from 78.7% to 90%. She discussed about determining a student's graduation before they get to high school, which is very important, and the system in which they are doing, using to determine that. Also, in February, Mr. Joe Ryder resigned from the committee. Last night, the committee met, and we now have a new chair. That new chair is Dr. Guido Manaya.
Okay.
Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you. Finance Advisory Committee.
Good afternoon, Board members, Dr. Atkins, Mr. Martin. Just want to follow up on what was brought up a little bit earlier by Mr. Toiber. The Finance Committee is the committee that proposed and recommended to the school board to consider the half-cent sales tax, and that was not a decision that we took very lightly. We looked at numerous other avenues to avoid any kind of sales tax increase, and we are still looking at other avenues beyond the sales tax. We recognize that the sales tax is not going to be the end-all, and we continually discuss other avenues for reductions in operating expenses, capital expenditures. We look at increasing ways to produce additional income for the district, as has been recognized by the board at previous meetings, and we will continue to do so. Couple of things to bring to the attention of the board is, and I'm going to speak and allow Dr. Atkins to actually say it, because we were advised that the administration has actually picked up the gauntlet and is pursuing other cost reduction and expense reduction avenues. The one thing we were advised of is an energy audit that's being performed to help reduce those expenses, the efficiency study that's being performed. Ms. Petrika, who is a new liaison to our committee, immediately brought forth a recommendation that we're imposing. Granted, it's not going to be a huge cost savings, but we are going paperless in our committee. So every little bit does help.
Absolutely.
As far as our meetings, we met in November, and we were advised of the new process for construction... construction and how that process will be performed on a going-forward basis by Mr. Mora and Mr. Rickenbacher. We've also, as we have done with every member of administration and the school board, offered our continued support in both advocating those processes and researching further those processes to help make them more efficient than they are. We have also, in December, unfortunately, on the other side, and it was brought up earlier, that Tallahassee is moving forward with 7069, and we had Mr. Dodig at our meeting to discuss the ramifications of that, and again, ways that our committee could look further at the imposition of 7069 and ways that we can help offset the effect to the district. We did have meetings in January and February. Just very briefly, in January, we discussed the budget process, and in February, we discussed the grant process, and I'll have more details on that at our next meeting. Again, as I always offer, we are available for any requests of the board or administration, and we will gladly take up the challenge at our next meeting. Are there any questions that you may have for me or for the Finance Advisory Committee?
Mr. Toiber.
Thank you. One of the things that I think we're continuing to, you know, we look at our teacher retention and our turnover rate, and, you know, there's discussions, we're talking about how do we keep our young teachers here by providing, particularly providing affordable housing, but providing them opportunities to be able to live here and sustain here in Lee County. It just becomes a hard time to do, make three Ps work, and, you know, I've looked at it 15 ways from Sunday. I really challenge the Finance Advisory Committee to find out a way to make three Ps or to make some avenue or some concept that we can actually use our investments. You know, they're talking about, you know, whether we use our property, you know, and, you know, sell it or loan it, employ it somehow of our surplus properties as some of that enterprise, and you talk about, you know, if we give a five, you know, Palomino's a good example. If we take that $5 million property and we give it to a project, to a three P project, are we giving taxpayer money? And I think we need to get the Finance Advisory Committee to start thinking out of the box as far as investments. When you look at turning over 500 teachers at $50,000 a turnover cost per teacher, you know, the $25 million that we're losing every year, you know, what's the cost of investment of doing something out of the box thinking to keep that retention? So, you know, I don't have the answers, and I don't, you know, the whole paradigm, but I think the Finance Committee has a lot of people that are in the finance industry that have probably more, better grasp on cost advantages and depreciation and some of the things that we can do that might make a project work. So I'm putting that challenge across to you guys to think about that, is to figure out a way to, to me, you know, besides the fact of being able to do our building costs and our capital, which we, you know, you guys came forward, our capital, half cent sales tax, and to figure out ways to generate income as we have by selling anything that we can put a label on, the next biggest problem that we have is how do we keep our teachers here in Lee County? And one of the mitigating factors is the fact that they can't afford to put roots in Lee County, because they can't afford to buy property in Lee County. And that's going to continue to grow as you start looking at our rental costs, you know, they can't even afford to rent in Lee County. So that's an issue that if we're, that's going to continue to get worse and worse, that adds to Dr. Pruitt's problem of even finding teachers that are even there. And so I thought that's something that would be worthwhile for you guys to look at.
If I can answer to that question. Several years ago, we did look at all of the properties that are owned by the school district. We approach it from a different perspective, either selling, leasing, or swapping properties. We did not pursue the avenue of potentially constructing residential on those properties. Obviously, we could absolutely pursue that. The other thing is, I've spoken with several lenders, and I, my wife is in the school district, and have spoken with several lenders. There are actually loan programs out there that will provide HUD housing at half price for schoolteachers. And the problem is that most people do not realize that while interest rates are going up, the banks have been held to very tight credit standards. They're recognizing that affordable housing is something that's slowly slipping by not just teachers, but the average American. So they are opening up various avenues to make housing more affordable, and obviously not put us on the bubble again, where people are going to get into homes that they cannot afford.
Right.
But absolutely, I will take up that challenge in our committee.
Just, Ms. Petrika and I have a comment after Ms. Petrika.
So I thought last month, we were supposed to have a presentation regarding a small project, public-private partnership, right? And that got canceled. So that might be a good starting point for us to begin a larger discussion regarding that. The other thing, too, is what is really fascinating, amazing, and awesome about your committee is you make me think of things from many different perspectives. I walk in thinking I understand an issue, and then you raise questions and issues that just make me think about it differently. And I'm really, really appreciative of the perspective that you bring, because this is such, and, I mean, I know everybody, every committee is really important, but it's really important for us to make sure we're maximizing the limited tax dollars we do have, and your perspective is just invaluable. You know, you kind of, you beat up our processes, but not in a negative way. It's always with the intention of making us better. So I'm just really appreciative for your efforts.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I do know, a question. When Finance Committee and Construction Committee, Advisory Committees, when they made their recommendations for us to move forward with the sales tax, those recommendations were given provided prior to the makeup of our advisory committees changes every year. So my question is, to the board members and also to the committee itself, have you been able to take a pulse of all of the current members to see if that vote were to be, if they were to make that recommendation again, if it would be a unanimous recommendation or not? And so I'm hoping that, as you are within your committees, that we're able to increase that education so that all members get a full understanding and can be in support of looking at this seriously. Dr. Atkins?
Mr. Cohen had referenced some of the things the district had been doing, some of it at the suggestion of the Financial Advisory Committee. So I just want to, some of you may be aware of this, because it's been recently added to our presentations, but for the viewing public and those of you who might not be, some of the largest savings that we've recouped have to do with energy, and we've witnessed the savings of about $38 million since 2010, as we watched the reduction of our energy consumption from $1.37 per square foot down to $1.15 a square foot, and we're hopefully on our way toward $1 a square foot. We, Dr. Decemoors and Kelly Letcher and that team also refinanced several bonds to the savings of $27 million. That is something that we are now no longer able to do, but we were able to get out in front of it and take advantage of that opportunity. Mr. Cody, who's out in the audience, through his team's efforts, they've been able to reduce $1.7 million out of transportation costs this year alone through improvements in route efficiency, and he continues to work on our proximity plan, which hopefully will realize more savings as we move forward. And through our maintenance department, Mr. Flock, we've got about $750,000 worth of savings there due to the maintenance they've done on HVAC systems and also some services that they've been able to do in-house, such as tree trimming, mulching, et cetera. And then on the revenue raising side of the house, through selling buses and technology and equipment, we've got about $695,000 that has been raised there. We've rented facility space to the, to revenue of $560,000. Naming rights, which again is something that came from the Financial Advisory Committee, $114,480 to date and more coming in. And then advertising on our website, which is also Financial Advisory Committee's recommendation, $18,000 and climbing. So all of those are efforts that we currently have underway in the district that are, you know, cost avoidance, cost savings, and then also raising revenues on the other side. And I haven't even talked grants, and I don't have those figures in front of me, but grants has certainly, has certainly made tremendous strides recently in terms of the number of grants that we've received and been awarded in the district.
Can you talk, when you, just, you don't have the numbers on the grants, Dr. Atkins, but, and I hate to interrupt, but can you talk a little bit about the black belt projects that are happening, grants that help that come to fruition?
I can talk in general sense. You might have a little bit more details than I do on that, so I don't want to get in, get into areas that I'm not knowledgeable. But I will say that, you know, I recently stopped by, it was actually Yellow Belt, right, Cindy?
Yellow Belt, yeah.
It was a Yellow Belt training, and there was a group there that was working on something that was going to save us $100, and I can't remember the exact, I thought it was like, it was one group that had like $100,000 savings that they were working on through, it was a Yellow Belt project. Other projects such Mr. Cody has, his team was Green Belt, correct? It was a Green Belt project that helped reach significant savings. I don't have the dollar amount, but that's one where we've, we have gotten cost savings out of. The Black Belt has been Dr. Halsted, and her efforts primarily focus on teacher retention and recruitment. So that's where, that's a totally different animal. You know, the estimates there, just to put that in perspective, anywhere from, if you take an experienced teacher, $38,000 to $45,000 in terms of the cost, so if you multiply that out times, let's say, the 500 that we lose every year, now you have to factor some of that out, because it's retirement, but it's a multimillion-dollar proposition if we can get, if we can get our hand around that. I don't know if I answered your question.
Yes, sir.
If you have more specific, let me know.
No, that's good.
But lot going on, so I don't have all the figures in my head, but the quality initiatives through Cindy McClung and Denise Carland are certainly doing a lot to help this district move forward and save a lot of money.
Ms. McClung?
Next month, we're going to be having a storyboard presentation. There are all of the projects, all of the rebuilds are going to be on display, so we'll get that information to you.
Awesome.
Thank you. Thank you. We look forward to that. Thank you, Mr. Cohen.
Thank you.
Thank you to all of you who are here from Advisory Committees. It is clear that they are, you are actively engaged in working, because we were actively engaged, and what took 30 minutes was to be allotted 30 minutes, we've actually taken 55 minutes.
Can I ask?
So we're going to try not to.
We have Councilman Nick Bedos from Astero in the back.
Yes.
And I told him we would likely get to the Astero item no later than 2:45. So can we move the Astero item up on the agenda, please, to respect his time?
Is everyone all right with that?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Thank you.
Let's go ahead, and we will take care of, Mr. Mora, if you are able to go ahead and come forward, we'll go ahead and have that conversation with the villages of Astero and the MOU. And Dr. Atkins, could you help me? MOU stands for?
Memorandum of Understanding.
Memorandum of Understanding. I should have written that out earlier, but I, my brain couldn't come up with the three words.
And just to introduce this topic, this has been, I think, a wonderful working agreement, arrangement that we've had with the Village of Astero. They've been wonderful, absolutely wonderful partners. We really hope that this serves as the exemplar for the school district as it moves on its initiative to try to build these types of relationships with all our municipalities. But we started with the Village of Astero, who, again, Mr. Bedos and his team, they've been wonderful partners. Also want to compliment our board members, particularly those of you down south that have also worked quite a bit with the Village of Astero that have helped make this happen. So having said that, I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Mora and Mr. Bedos, who's, you know, where we really got this idea, I need to credit them for really making this happen. So, gentlemen, please take it away.
Thank you, Dr. Atkins, and good afternoon, board members. As Dr. Atkins has suggested, our guest today is Mr. Nick Bedos. He's a valuable advocate for the school district down there in the south part of Lee County. He represents the Astero Village Council, and I'm very happy to have him join me today presenting this exciting and collaborative partnership that has been forged between the two entities. Just a little bit about Mr. Bedos. He is Astero's founding mayor. He was instrumental in their coming together as a village. He represents the sixth district in Astero, and he has a long history of working in the community in both improvement and development. So we welcome him here today. As you see in your backup materials, you do have a draft of the memo. That is a live-in document. Just this past week, Mr. Bedos and the city council actually had this in front of them in a workshop, and I believe you might have a version that demonstrates some of the things that they've actually suggested to be changed. I think it's a red line version, basically some minor changes to verbiage. But I also would like to just highlight some things in the MOU, if you don't mind, before I turn it over to Mr. Bedos. As Dr. Atkins said, what we've actually developed here is a model for working with all of our municipalities here in Lee County, in addition to the county government. The key component of this partnership is the Joint Educational Advocacy Task Force that we're setting up. That task force would have representatives from both the district as well as the village, and all of the schools that are within the village city limits, including Three Oaks Elementary and Three Oaks Middle. And just to touch on some of the things and opportunities that we want to work collaboratively together towards, is building opportunities for mentoring and tutoring, leveraging community ambassadors, the development of career academies and job skills programs, building student internships with local businesses in the Village of Astero. We want to establish and start developing a mechanism in our student assignment system that prioritizes the assignment of students in Astero to schools within the village boundaries. We also want to look at the co-location of future educational and recreational facilities. It's becoming really imperative that the school district work with municipalities as well as the county government in co-locating facilities. We can gain a lot of efficiencies and savings by looking at future growth in that way. Also, the upgrading of facilities as well as the use of facilities, and we anticipate at a later date bringing forward an inter-local agreement for the uses of facilities in Astero Village. So that gives you kind of a background in regards to the memorandum of understanding that we are developing. I'd like to have Mr. Bedos take a few moments to share some of the enthusiasm from down in the village.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much for having me here today. I also would like to thank Chris Petrika for all the work that she's done over the last eight or nine months with me on this project. This project, in my mind, goes back several years, when we were really disappointed by people who came into our community and decided that our school system wasn't the school system for their children, and a lot of them moved into Cuyahoga County. At that point, I was looking for a way that we could establish a sense of ownership, a sense of pride in our community for people that would be coming into it. I think Astero has, over the years, demonstrated its ability to gather a community, a community strength, a community involvement in what is going on in Astero, and that is one of our strong points, and I think that we can do that here. I think that by the city being involved, we're recognizing the importance of education in a community, and we want to have our community understand that better than they do at this point. I think that the idea of having our residents, our businesses, and our government take a step forward to improve what we already have. I think that the system is working, there's a lot of good things that are being done by it, but I think some of the perception that people have is deterring from what can be accomplished. We believe that we, over the next year, we can rally the troops, rally our residents, our businesses, to participate in this venture. As was mentioned earlier, I think if it works, it'll be a great asset to the district, because it can be emulated in many cases in many other areas. The one thing that we find that I feel that is really important is that once we start this, there is a, there continues to be this collaboration between the district, the city, and the principals. We've got to get it down to the local level, because I think what's missing in, and I've told this to many people in our council, I think what's told this to many people in our council, I think what's missing here, it's because it's of its nature, Lee County is an enormous school district, and I compare it in some way to where I come from, New York City. We had an enormous school district, we had many communities, very diversified, but the parents who were, had children in school, the, the people in the community didn't feel an ownership, didn't feel a pride
Right.
...of the school system, unlike what we saw in surrounding communities in New Jersey, in Long Island, Connecticut, where you had a much smaller thing, a much smaller school district, and the, everybody in the school and that district or in that community took an involvement. They were at the games on Friday nights.
Right.
They were involved in what the students did, and it's, you know, I'm using a terminology, not be, just because it's, coincidentally, it's similar, it's making a village
[laughing]
out of the community.
Right.
And that's what we're trying to do here, and I think it'll help the students, it'll help the, the, the community as a whole, and it'll help the city, because I think if, if people see that our system is more desirable, it is better in its facilities, its curriculum, its aesthetics, then they will want to come to us, and that will raise the value of everything we have in our community. And I hope that your board will join in and continue with this process.
As a matter of process, in your backup material, you'll also have a timeline for approval, and the next dashing steps will be bringing it to our board here on March 27th for approval, and the village of Astero will be bringing it forward on March 21st. There seems to be a desire on both sides to have a celebratory signing of the document, and we're working on that with the village as we speak.
Mr. Twyper?
I wanted to say, are you?
Yeah, well, I was just, I, I'd like to thank, thank Mark and Chris, you know, from our side, and of course, Nick and your whole group for doing this. You know, it's, it's funny that I always, when I, when I speak out in the communities, you know, I talk to people and I say, you know, you know, Lee County, you know, we only have sixty-seven school districts in the state of Florida, and I ask a lot of people why, and people don't even know, that, you know, that our constitution, you know, mandated it, and I said, you know, I don't know if back in eighteen twenty-eight, if they envisioned school districts with three hundred and twenty-three thousand students, like in Miami or, or with us, you know, with ninety, you know, approaching a hundred thousand here in Lee County, and, and the problem that you have is that, you know, I don't even think the people in Elva know what's, even where Astero is, and, and I had to look on the map to see exactly the confines of where Astero starts and stops.
Exactly.
You know, vaguely, I know it's, you know, above Benita Springs and below San Carlos Park, but that's about it, you know, and, and, but yet, where I grew up in Battle Creek, in my township, we had one high school, one middle school, and two elementaries, and that's what Astero is trying to do, is to, is to bring that into a, into a community where it's a, it's a village, you know, it's a township, and, and, and I think that that is something that we need to encourage throughout all of Lee County to get, you know, to still be a school district, but to have that, that, that
Community.
ownership, that community feel, you know, in our localities, and so, so I really appreciate what Astero is doing, and I'm sure going to be in supportive of this, and, and continue to support what you're doing down there in Astero, so thank you.
I, I just want to thank you, and, and Mr. Mora, you mentioned a red line version. I did not have a, I don't see a red line version here.
It's just the word volunteers is replaced with ambassadors.
Oh, it was just one, it was just one, so it was just one minor detail.
Yeah, I do apologize. At the workshop, Mr. Bedos was attended, as well as Ms. Petrika, there was some recommendation to make some minor changes to verbiage.
Okay, but otherwise.
Bastards for volunteers. The gist of the things that we're proposing to work on remains the same.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to make sure that there was something, something else added or not.
I will be sure to make sure you get the red line version. I think the version you're looking at is the updated version, including those recommendations.
Gotcha. So I'm just, I was just saying, you know, if there was something that, anyway, and then, it's interesting that you brought up, you know, I, you're right, I think a lot of us don't know where one part ends and another part begins within all of Lee County. Imagine how we, out on the east end, no one knows where Olga and Alva and Buckingham and then Lee High Acres, they're all convoluted together and think of themselves as whole, even though they're separated, they, so I believe we're going to start seeing as areas develop. We're going to see more and more of villages and incorporation, so it's great to have this model. I appreciate it, and thank you so much to Ms. Petrika and to the council for their hard work in developing this and their passion.
We're arguing about how to spell co-location, sorry. I think I'm right, he thinks he's right. I have to tell you that I was initially resistant to this, and Nick will vouch for that. I see myself as a resident of Lee County, and I'm proud to have the ability to choose schools for my children, so I didn't really understand the need or the desire for a community feeling surrounding our schools, but the more I talk to Nick and the more I've talked to community members down in Astero, I get it, and Ms. Vaughn, you talked about the, the external threats to the district to include the state delegation, the state legislature, and the county commission, and we have all had difficulties with our fellow elected officials, most specifically in the past couple of months, and working with Nick has just been a breath of fresh air. The man is completely dedicated to doing what's best for the people of Astero, and that's it. There's no agenda there. He just wants the village to be successful, and he wants the people in Astero to be happy, so he, he's really, he's just been a pleasure to work with, and I really think that this is going to take off, and I know that we are both chomping at the bit to get it started. We want that first task force meeting to happen tomorrow, so I will obviously be supporting this as well. Thank you, Nick, for your work, I really appreciate it.
Thank you, Chris.
Ms. Morgan?
Yes, and I also want to thank Nick, because I think he is a leader among local leaders in this county. He's, you've got vision, and you articulate your vision, and your vision's built around a community, and a community comes, you know, if there's involvement, then there's understanding and commitment, and what we don't have right now, in many cases, is the involvement of the community in our schools, and therefore, we don't have an understanding or a commitment to it, and you're, you're doing something that I, I'm just really excited about, and I, I will support it, it, I hope it works, because I really think it is where we need to go as a county in, in, in developing partnerships for the school district. So thank you very much for your leadership, I really appreciate what you've done.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Right, thank you very much.
Thank you, Paul.
Thank you very much.
All right, we're going to back up, and we're going to go with Dr. Atkins and Maggie, Ms. Maggie Stevens. Policy number four point three six, bylaws of Head Start, early Head Start Policy Council. Okay.
Good afternoon, board. I'm bringing before you the Policy Council bylaws, which will come to public hearing on March 27th. The, the Policy Council is required to review the, their bylaws annually, and we haven't made any changes since 2015. The changes that we've made this year are required because, for the first time in over twenty years, Head Start has new performance standards, and so we have updated them, and in your packet, I believe, is the red lined copy. There are very few actual formative and substantive changes. One is we've just simply, with Mr. Martin's input, simplified the introductory statement. We've changed the federal citations so that they meet the new federal guidelines, and we have put in a new requirement that the Policy Council will use ongoing monitoring results and data on school readiness to conduct its responsibilities, which is, brings it more in alignment with the rest of the world of education. And the thing that is most important to families is that it increases, the Policy Council reps can serve up to five years. Back to twenty years ago, it was a mostly a three, four-year-old program, and so people were gone in two to three years, but with the inception of early Head Start, families really can be there from the birth of their child until they go to kindergarten, so the willingness for them to be able to serve longer is important to them. The Policy Council reviewed these changes and voted on them earlier this year. That's it.
Board members, any questions or comments? I just want to say I am glad for the length of term, because that allows for continuity. It is so hard when there is a turnover. I know that when I was the board liaison member, it was almost like every year you had to retrain
Correct.
and regroup, and this, this is going to be, be much more efficient, and also allow for more collegiality among those, those members, so they support and build each other up too, as well.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Stevens, excuse me, I'm getting too personal. Next, Business Services, Ms. Lester, and Mr. Burton, Blerton. I, I was thinking of Richard Burton instead of Greg Blerton.
As he's making, as they're making their way to the, the dais and preparing the presentation, I just have to say that this is Mr. Blerton's first board briefing as our new CFO, so this is a momentous occasion for the school district of Lee County, so.
And I'm disappointed that it's not a Wednesday, because now
Yes, that's right.
[laughing] I made a funny joke about the day.
Not hump day, it is not, no. But it is all ki, it's March thirteenth, can you believe it's mid-March already? All kinds of seasons happening, it's, you know, just, it's our high season, it's tax season, it's allergy season, but if you work in the school district, it's budget season. And it's definitely been
Budget season.
Season, not wabbit season. It's, it's wabbit season for Elmer Fudd all day, every day, but for the school district of Lee County, it's budget season. And thank you, Dr. Atkins, very much appreciate that, and, and thank you, Kelly, for being here with me today, as it is my first board briefing as CFO, and board meeting later tonight, and Kelly provided you our first briefing, as it is budget season, on just our draft timeline, coming to you, just updating you as we go through this season, where we are. I believe also she introduced you to our new budget prep system, and again, kudos and thanks to Mr. Davis and the Green Agile team for, for pulling that together, and then, and then Kelly and our team in budget for implementing that with all of our divisions and departments, it's going very, very well. So today, we just, again, wanted to just update you, specifically, we are on schedule. Right now, what's happening is all of the departments have gotten their budgets to their chiefs, the chiefs are reviewing those to finalize, and then another big milestone is later this month is, is providing the, the DRAs, district resource allocations to our schools, and what you have in your backup materials is the quick reference guide for that, the formulas that we use in working with the schools, and then the, the minimum, maximum guidelines for staffing requirements at each level that you have, so we are here to, to answer questions if you have them, and otherwise, we'll keep you updated, and we'll be back again with another briefing as we hit some more of the bigger milestones that you see in the timeline. Kelly, did you have anything to add?
Board members?
No.
Okay. I just will come forward and say, oh boy, there's mixed feelings on this one, but before class size amendment, we were able to assist our teachers with, maybe the class sizes were a little bit larger, but we also were able to provide them with a paraprofessional, and those paraprofessionals are invaluable at the elementary level, and also a cost-saving measure, and it's a shame that because of the amendment, we, we're not able to do that. And so, and so it goes. I was telling someone the other day, I had my thirty-two third graders and a part-time paraprofessional, and when class sizes went down, I would have gladly gone back to thirty-two and had that paraprofessional there to assist me with group instruction and differentiation. So, thank you so much to you and to our schools for working hard to make my wise use of funds so that we're able to accomplish as much as we can. Dr. Atkins?
Just wanted to take this opportunity to update you on, on a couple of our initiatives in the budget department and the, and their, also their division. One of the things that we had hoped to achieve, that because of all the transition, we were unable to achieve it this particular season, but it's still on the front burner, is to try to improve the accuracy of the algorithm of which we apply to ELL and certain ESE students. ELL, you're talking about your, you know, your students in our ESOL programs, and the reason for that is, obviously, not every ELL student is, is the same, so one of the things that I'd ask Dr. Destimmo to work on, and I know Kelly and, and Greg continue to do that work, is to, to really look at what are some good fundamental staffing levels for the different types of
That's wonderful.
services that need to be rendered, that's something that they continue to do, to do work on. Another thing, when it comes to the minimum and maximums, we are continuing to look at our administrative ratios, and right now, just as a school district in, in general, we are, we are administratively understaffed in most areas, with the exception of assistant principal. So overall, our ratio does not compare as favorably as it might with the state. We're, we're in the mix of things, but we're, we tend to be a little bit on the higher end, because we have, we've tried to put more resources out to schools, and that's in, those resources are typically in the way of, of assistant principals that make us a little bit heavier in the administrative ranks. So if you take a look at like, you know, Dr. Pruitt's division, and the number of administrators that you're going to have there relative to a comparable school district, it will be less than what you will find typically, like, for example, we just go down south to Collier County, and, you know, much, much higher numbers, but if you go to one of our larger high schools, per se, you might find an extra assistant principal because of the, the great needs that you see at those schools, particularly, you know, managing some of the, the mental health and behavioral issues that often are left to assistant principals to handle, because they're kind of like that multipurpose utility infielder that, you know, you can use them for a multitude of things, so, and because of the reduction in some of the other things, because of class, class size, counselors, social workers, et cetera, they end up having to kind of pick up that job and wear more than one hat, unfortunately. So, anyway, they are, continue to look at that, we're exploring options in terms of potentially utilizing instructional units to do different things at schools, looking at the way we do deploy school counselors, social workers that I mentioned, but also looking at the old dean model, which was, in some cases, is an instructional model versus a, an evaluative model, like an assistant principal is expected to do evaluations, but if you're at a school where you've got to churn significant behavioral concerns, maybe that is not something that's necessary, and do we need to be doing a two-hundred-and-sixteen day contract for that? Do we need to have the credential? And it's a good, it's a good training ground for those who might aspire to be in those positions. So, they're doing all that work, I just wanted you to know that, that they and, and human resources, academic services continue to work on those type of things. It's not necessarily reflective in this document this time, but half penny sales tax, transition as CFO, and some other issues that, that that division has been dealing with, which including has its own staffing concerns that has had to dealt, deal with this year. All of that has caused us to push some of that down the road a little bit, but I think, as we all know, the half penny sales tax initiative really has made one of the largest bumps and all that, but that doesn't mean the work has gone away.
Exactly.
It continues on in that division, so, just wanted to bring that to your attention.
I just want to thank you, and, Mr. Blerton, I want to make sure that you're aware that when we go for our finance training, most of us are told that every time you see your C, Chief Financial Officer, to give them a hug for all that they have to do. So just be prepared for a few hugs along the way. Ms. Lester will give you hugs too.
Ms. Petrika's shaking her head.
Sorry, I'm not a hugger.
That's okay. I appreciate that, and thank you all very much.
I appreciate you, but I'm not going to hug you.
Thank you, and, let's see, major capital project update. Mr. Mark Moore and Mr. Scott Rickenbacher.
So as they're coming up, I know that a number of you have taken a tour of Benita Springs High School, and so I'm very glad to see that you all are taking advantage of that opportunity, and we did, Mr. Rickenbacher just sent some more drone pictures, which we recently shared with you, so I appreciate that, thank you for the updates, and, and it's good to see that good to see that we are progressing well. So, having said that, I'll turn it over to Scott and Mark for our major projects update.
Good evening, board members. Dr. Atkins, a quick update on Benita Springs High School. For many of you who've been there, you can see paint, carpet, ceiling tile, air conditioning, and sports fields. We are on schedule, and we're actually ahead of schedule, and it looks like we might be able to get the principal in a little bit early to get situated once the school year ends. We're anticipating trying to make the St. Patty's Day and sprigging our sports field, so as you drive down Imperial Parkway, you'll see that it's green. The big key points that we have going on right now is we have returned $3.1 million back to the district. Below in the tiny print, you'll see our value engineering process has returned $2.3 million, and our direct material purchases are at $790,000. We're not going to see these great increments moving forward, but we're going to continue to attack and gain these savings for you. MMM High School, we have engaged with the architect, evidently we've had our kickoff meeting last week, the Army Corps permit is, the folder is officially opened and they're working on it. The RFQ process for the construction manager at risk was held today, and the construction manager at risk is anticipated to come to the board for the April 10th board meeting. We met with Lee County EOC in regards to whether MMM will be a shelter, and they are very much looking forward to that. They've had some great ideas that they shared with us, not just to be a public shelter, but also a first responder shelter utilizing the media center. So we look forward to that partnership. Lehigh Senior Edition, right now, tonight, you will be receiving the architect's ranking for approval for that, we've had that, and the construction manager's ranking should be coming to you on March 27th. So that's the report, everything's moving forward accordingly.
Thank you, Scott.
What do we have for a projected date for opening MMM?
Right now, MMM is to be opened for August of '21 school year, but the actual hard first building, administration building, typically we try to make sure that they're open for July 1 for furniture move-in and the principal to get acclimated into that new facility. Now, the freshman class, however, will open in '20, and portable's behind Lehigh Senior High School.
So the building, let me just be clear, is 2021? Twenty, 2020, 2021?
Yes.
So that FY21, and then Lehigh Senior is 1920?
August of 19, the addition building will be opened up, correct.
Thank you.
Definitely much-needed capacity. I love these board briefings because I get to see Mr. Rickenbacher in a suit, so it's a special treat. Good afternoon again, board members. In your backup material, you also received change order reports for both January and February of 2018, and as you peruse those, I just want to highlight a few things off of those reports. In the January report, you'll note that the district has been returned $32,579 from the Benita Springs High School project through direct material purchases, and on the February report, you'll see that we've returned close to $174,000 through value engineering and unused project funding. So again, these are great examples of the ongoing commitment of our district team, as well as our partners in construction management and design services, to reduce the total construction cost at Benita Springs High School.
Mr. Toiber.
I'm a little bit confused that in the, I'm sure it's just a convention thing, but in January, it's a minus, and then in February, it's a, it's parentheses?
I believe that's a typo. When you see the tax savings, it should have had the parentheses to indicate the $32,000 coming back.
Okay.
It does show the $32,000 coming back.
But I'm looking at the 582086 actually in the change order amounts.
Has a minus instead of parentheses.
Is that a negative, or is that supposed to be brackets, or is that just a dot on the screen?
This is for the $32,000 on direct material purchase?
Look in, in February, and report number one, direct material change order amounts shows a decrease of negative 582.
Is that supposed to be in parentheses?
I think there, when we do the direct material purchase, we actually get the money from the construction manager back from the project to purchase the materials so that we don't pay the sales tax, and then the materials are delivered back to the CM for use, and we realize the tax savings from that. So we do deduct from the budget to buy the materials as a district entity, because that's where the tax savings come from. Unfortunately, the CM can't do the same. So direct material purchases allow us to buy materials tax-free. I'm not sure, I don't have that particular report right in front of me, but I believe that's what the negative is demonstrating. And which numbers are you referring to? For the February?
I think it's a formatting issue.
Yeah, I think it's just a formatting issue, because your backup paperwork shows it properly denoted in the negatives.
Mr. Turber, if you don't mind, we, after the meeting, could sit down and go through it and find that one and provide you that explanation.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I can see it, on the backup, it actually shows, you show, the math shows 649, as far as the PO purchase, the 582 returned back to the general manager with the, with the cost saves of the $32,000, which reflected.
Yeah, the 582 is the actual reduction in the CM contract money coming back to us?
Correct.
The $32,000 is the savings that we realized.
Because of the tax, because of the tax shift.
And we're used to seeing it formatted in parentheses is what I believe, and most of the time, it shows parentheses, but in this time, it has the negative.
We missed the parentheses.
We'll make sure there's some consistency in reporting.
It's, I don't know if anybody's got our backup, in the backup, you can see it's clearly articulated in the second page, in the detailed, but not in the summary, and I just didn't want somebody to get confused.
The numbers are correct, we'll just make sure the typos aren't there. Thank you. Sorry.
Okay, thank you, board members, and Dr. Atkins.
Thank you very much for, to everyone for all that you do. Everyone is working hard, and much of that happens because even our superintendent is working hard. He sets the tone, and everybody's picking up, working right along with him. So, thank you to all. Board member comments. Ms. Morgan?
Public comment first.
Oh, I am so sorry, I totally skipped public comment. Mr. Martin, would you please, do we have any cards for public comment?
No, ma'am, but we should still ask for.
Yes. So are there, on my right, your left, any public comment? What about my left, your right? Okay. At this time, there is no, no one seems to be here for public comment, so maybe it's because I looked out and I didn't see members of the public still here. Board member comments, Ms. Morgan?
So I attended the Student Advisory Meeting, and it is astonishing to participate or to observe the Student Advisory Committee meetings now, because they run the show, and it was, it's very impressive. Dr. Atkins can make a comment about how well they run the show. I didn't make a note about what the presentations were about, because I was totally focused on the end, which was the last half hour, Dr. Atkins spoke about, school safety and security, mentioned the meeting that he had had with the students earlier in the day, asked for their input, there were some comments, some questions, handled very well. The group agreed to have, to continue the conversation at their next meeting. So, that's my report on that on Saturday.
Prior to that, it was the gifted presentation.
Oh, that's right. Oh, yes. That was interesting. The gifted present, the staff that presents does an exceptional job, and again, I just wish we could film all of this and put it up on the website so that people could see, you know, our staff present, not only the professional presentation, but the content, et cetera, I just, I wish we could figure out a way to do that. Saturday, I went to League of Women Voters to see Dr. Bethany Quisenberry, who's principal at Franklin Park, present on Pennies for Community Progress. She also did a really nice job. Somebody made a comment earlier about Pennies for Community Progress being on the ballot with us, I think that's a real, I think that's really up in the air, I don't, I don't think that's, that's something that's going to happen. Essentially, where they're at is that they either have to get one more vote on the county commission that will allow them to put it on the ballot, or they have to raise enough money to put it on the ballot themselves, and if that's the case, they won't be able to put it on until 2020. But again, they're doing good work, they have a lot of good information, they have a very strong case to make, but there's pushback against them as well, and so, they're dealing with it. Those are my comments. I would like Dr. Atkins to either this afternoon or this evening, comment on the Student Nationwide Walkout, and also to comment about the conversations you're having with staff in the community about our security and safety plan, so that's it for me.
Okay. Mr. Toiber?
Thank you. I attended the JROTC Military Ball this past weekend, and I am just constantly impressed with our JROTC programs across our district. We have the largest ROTC contingent in the country, and we are the most heralded and most distinguished, I think, in the country with the awards that we receive at all of our schools. They had just announced, there is 40 ROTC programs in the country that have been awarded to be part of the pilot, to actually get the ROTC curriculum at, to test it, and to see, and to give critique, and to model it for, to be rolled out nationwide, and Mariner High School has been selected as one of those 40 in Lee County to do that. So, it, all their curriculum comes down from the web, RIT people are going to have to figure all that out. Of course, when I said it to Trey, he didn't even flinch, he was there as well, and he's like, you know, got it covered, we do that, it's not a problem, so, which I didn't expect it to be, so, but I was very excited that we are, again, being recognized as one of the leaders in that program, so I just want to commend all of our ROTC commanders and our administration, Dr. Colonel Madigan and Colonel Jakovic for what they do, and that's all I have.
Okay, Ms. Patrica.
So Mary Reader, Susan, and Jen Schaefer, is she the one that puts together our agendas?
Yes, Jen Schaefer.
They are, I mean, this struck me like a month ago, they make it so that we are beyond reproach when it comes to record-keeping. They're just amazing, their attention to detail is phenomenal, and it took me a whole year on the board to figure out exactly what it is that Jen does, and just how invaluable, Mary in particular, because I work most closely with Mary, but Susan as well, they're unbelievable, and I wouldn't be able to do what I do without you, so, thank you very much. Dr. Carlin, the news press has a lot of forums at their building for various community issues, including Pennies for Community Progress, they hold forums for candidates for various political offices, have we thought about approaching them to have a forum regarding the halfpenny sales tax? And the last thing I have is FHSAA. For the past three weekends in a row, I've been traveling for state championship series, the first was girls and boys soccer, the Estero Girls came in second place, they made it, and they came in second place. What I learned about soccer is that there's, especially on the boys' side, there's this culture of theater associated with soccer, there's a lot of acting involved, and there's a lot of emotion involved, and it's a whole culture, it's like, you know, these kids played each other in club soccer six months ago, and they still hold a grudge, so they take it on each other, and the referees remember it, and the whole thing was really crazy. I played soccer in high school, all I did was side tackle, I didn't, I didn't know there were three theatrics involved in the sport, so that was crazy fun. And then, the last few weekends, I attended the girls' state championship series, and I was able to watch Fort Myers High School, three-peat, for the third year in a row, they are state champions, and then last weekend, it was the boys. And I was courtside for watching the most talented boys in the state of Florida play basketball, and basketball's my favorite sport, and that's my job. Can you believe that's my job? Can you believe that's my job? I can't believe that's my job. Anyways, I don't just sit there and watch basketball, I do talk to the other board members and the various athletic directors who come and go, and it just made me start to think, and you and I talked about this briefly, it's something I'd like this board to start to think about for long-term, not tomorrow, we have a lot on our plates right now, but what is the purpose of athletics in Lee County? Is it about, you know, is it a separate program at each school? You know, some schools I go to, like Lehigh Senior High School, for example, Jackie Corey is all about the kids and the quality of the kids, and making sure they're good scholar athletes, and making sure that character is being instilled in them through being on a team, and winning and losing, and all the things associated with sports, but do we have a district vision when it comes to athletics? And that's, that's something I'd like us to start to think about, because we, we kind of have a district vision when it comes to the arts because of Dr. Santini and his involvement, but do we have that district vision when it comes to athletics? So I just want to throw that out there for you guys to noodle on, and I'll bring it up again when we're less busy. That's it.
We'll go to Ms. Fisher, and then come back to you, Mr. Toiber. Ms. Fisher?
Okay, thank you very much. I came in late today because I was attending the Pace Grand Doms Tea, and I've been out in the community, working with a lot of our partners, all of whom impact our students, and the students at Pace are our students, and they were very complimentary to the district for the academic support that they've given, and the amazing progress that they have made academically, and also with the transition program, getting girls who have had difficulties back into traditional school settings, and in fact, supporting them and following them into dual enrollment and college classes. So, that was, it was called "The Wisdom of Age: Honoring the Female Spirit," and it really is a wonderful opportunity for community members to support those kids who really are struggling to become a good, strong part of the community, and this program has really helped. Along those lines, I attended the Drug Free Coalition United Way site visit the other morning, and we had a Mariner student who had taken part in the Drug House Odyssey acting and production, and he testified and was very instrumental in the United Way people voting to continue to support the Drug Free Coalition because of the impact on young people in the community. I guess you heard the DAC reports earlier in this meeting, and I'm looking forward to the Wednesday evening meeting, when we are going to add to our agenda, talking more about school safety and security, which is something that everyone in the community is talking about and asking about. In fact, when I was at the Tea, NBC was there looking for comments about that. So, last week, at Idah Baker High School, I was invited to judge the Bulldog Showcase, which is senior projects, children who attend the academies, all had amazing, intricate projects, I mean, the research and the information was tremendous, so I really enjoyed doing that, and at the same time, was the Peace Run, and that was sponsored by an international committee, which also consists of Kathy Order, who is the wife of Al Order, and does a lot of our red ribbon activities with the district. So, I thought that that was something that really is part of what our safety and security should look like, having people come together and demonstrate peacefully to have people not engage in violence. I also attended the League of Women Voters with Kathleen, and thought that Ms. Quisenberry did an excellent job, and even illustrated some of the challenges that our students endure, and how amazing it is that sometimes they even come to school, and people are beginning to recognize just how much teachers and principals and school staff do to support kids, they definitely go above and beyond every day, and so I thank all of our staff for their hard work. I think there was one other thing here. I wanted to thank you, Mrs. Morgan, for being at the school board Student Advisory Committee meeting, when I couldn't be there, and I understand it went well. The students have come a long way in a few years, and they really, I believe, have so many ways of identifying issues, but they also come up with solutions, and I thought that that was really good, so I'm glad that we're continuing dialogue with the students. And the other thing was, I attended the Cape Coral Mayor Scholarship Fund fundraiser last Thursday, and we will be, again, awarding 25 scholars. Thursday, and we will be again awarding 25 scholarships to Cape Coral students. And this year, we have taken a step forward and included scholarships to technical schools, not only to university, because that's really where the jobs are. So we took a message from the workforce development people and our Cape Coral business people and opened it up to those students wanting to attend technical training, and it was a huge success, and we had a lot of amazing feedback about that. In fact, a family that is representing the Gunterberg Foundation gave $5,000 specifically earmarked for a vocational secondary scholarship. So I'm anxious to hear Dr. Atkins' talk on the walkout. I sent him some more information of something that I found or someone posted on Facebook and I found, so I'm looking forward to that as we continue to provide our kids with opportunities and alternatives to help our safety and security by doing peaceful activities and staying safe in the meantime. And I think that's all I have today. Thank you.
Thank you. I have to go. I went, oh, that's right, Mr. Toyber had something that he forgot to mention.
Thank you. I missed it. When we, the board, I wanted to throw out a conversation. When we talk about trying to get the message out for our sales tax initiative and our capital issues, I talked to Dr. Atkins about, you know, the Cape Coral Charter Schools is a city school. They're a charter as well, but they get some funding from the new charter legislation. So we'd have to figure out, you know, how that, the monies they get to be offset against, you know, so that we're on an equal share as far as giving them some of the tax money. But the fact that that school is also taxpayer dollars, and those are our kids as well, is it something that we want to embrace about partnering with them as far as their prorated share of their children on the extra amount over and above? Is that something we want to have a discussion here at this board to include them, to bring in the Cape, because that's a huge voting block, and get them participatory to help us? And I think, you know, we had that discussion, you know, for years, that, you know, we, they are not your typical charter school. You know, they build their schools. They didn't have to, but they build them like we do. You know, they don't have to have the accountable standards like we do, but they do. You know, they've done everything right, and they've always wanted to be partners with us, and they've been great academic partners with us, and so I just wanted to have that discussion, so.
A thought that occurred to me is to recommend that as possible workshop component to discuss rather than today. Ms. Morgan?
Yes, I just wanted to let you know that four years ago, when I was board chair, I went around and spoke to every member of the Cape Coral Council, talked to them about the idea of taking their inventory, since it meets state requirements, and putting it in with our inventory and maintaining it on our inventory schedule, because their schools are newer.
Right.
If we're allocating on a per pupil, they're getting more per pupil than our kids are getting, that we need to maintain our schools. And that went nowhere, but it makes me think about having heard Nick Beto speak, that that may be exactly the kind of thing we need to open a conversation with Cape Coral about, a memorandum of understanding around the charter school. Because I agree. I mean, they are our kids. If the school fails, or if, not fails, but if the school decides at any point it doesn't want to be a municipal charter anymore, it could immediately become part of the school district.
Exactly.
There's no, whatever. Anyway, so I just wanted to throw that in, and I do agree, Pam, that maybe we should...
Yeah. And I think that is a good point of discussion and even conversations that I've had with a couple of the Cape Council members. I believe they would like for there to be conversations.
And if I may?
Yes.
There is a new council now.
Yes, right. Let's see. Piggybacking a little bit on what Ms. Patrica was talking about when she referenced Ms. Corey at Lehigh Senior High, it's not, and it's not just within the athletics. She finds, she makes their staff make sure that every kid has a niche. If it's not in the arts, where is their component that they find a place, that they have their home base, that they have their team to support them? Whether it's even the ones who are not quote-unquote "in the arts" program, they find a niche within that program. They find some piece, and I truly believe, I think that's becoming a mindset in many of our schools of doing that. And the athletics is truly a very strong point, and I think that Ms. Patrica is going to be hanging on to that part of being a representative from FSBA and not be too willing to give it up to any other FSBA members to have, because she's enjoyed it so much, and you're perfect for that position. So thank you. I love the arts. I love this time of the year, but we can't make it to all of them, but I did make it to the Elementary All County Chorus, which was pure delight. And the instructor that they brought in was absolutely amazing with the level of energy she had and giving the kids these parts and bringing them in at the right time. She was a true conductor as she was working with the kids, and they were challenged, which is good, and loved hearing parts rather than just all in unison. And then also had the pleasure of going to see "Once Upon a Mattress" at North Fort Myers Academy of the Arts, and again, was totally blown away at what has developed and happened within that, in that program and how it's grown. But I was further blown away and challenged to see that we see that same caliber of opportunities for Veterans Park Academy for the Arts, for Benita Middle, and for Cypress Lake Middle, that we need to find some way that those schools will have an auditorium for the performances that are within their school, because even with Cypress Lake Middle, they have to traipse over to go to Cypress Lake High, and it's a lack of, you lose instructional time. You lose a lot in the process, and also, so we've got to help people find the money from naming rights or whatever so that there is a larger dance room out at North Fort Myers High School. And it's not because we, the county, aren't doing everything we can. Please understand, we are. But when the money started ceasing in 2007, it stopped a lot of the programs that we were wanting to do. So it's still my passion, and I see a P3 piece coming out there in Lehigh with an idea that is bouncing around among community members and myself, and I think we're going to one day have something we'll approach even with our state delegation to help work out the funding. And then today, I have to share, and Ms. Patrica, I believe you were there yesterday at South Fort Myers with Minding Your Mind. I don't know if any other board members were able to make it to any of the other programs. This morning, I was at Dunbar, and I... First of all, they were so, they were very impressed with how the kids came in so orderly. You could tell that Carl Burnside is definitely left-brained, and he is concrete sequential. His math shows well in everything he does. And the kids did. They came in, they were ready, they were ready and prepared to listen, and when it hit the hard parts, because you see kid, when you have, when you're dealing with something personally and it starts to hit, then you do the avoidance piece. You'll talk with somebody, or you'll do something, you'll pull out your phone. And with a lot of the kids, it was, you know, for a lot of kids, it gets close to home. And I apologize, but I believe briefing meeting is probably better more so than action meeting for me to share this, but so I'm going to. It's very difficult for some of our kids to own and understand why they are battling some of the things that they have. Many times, they cannot find the words to it. Many times, they don't know the source of where it originally came. And that was me. And I could relate to Drew Bergman today as he was sharing the, for him, being suicidal at the middle school junior high age, and then it again happening later on in high school, because that was me. And no one, no one knew how to cope. No one in the schools knew what to do, knew what signs to look for, and friends didn't And to this, well, but the one guiding hope who later became a dean at Fort Myers High was Margaret Sariani. And she was the one staff member that reached out and helped me walk through that time along with finally finding a very good psychologist who knew how to work with someone, because back in the '70s, it wasn't back in the old ages, '70s was not that long ago, but back in the '70s, people, that people didn't know, they weren't sure how to deal with things. Knowledge bases weren't there, and those support teams, systems were in place. And I am glad that there are people now today that are out there helping our kids know that mental health is something that's real. It's, mental health is something that families need to talk about and people need to understand, and that our teachers, our counselors are all better trained and better focused on knowing how to look at and what to deal with it, and to know, for him to give tips on what you can do when you are at this point. It was extremely powerful. I thank you to Kristine Collins and the partnership with Lee Health on bringing this forward. I wish we could have brought it forward to all of our middle and high schools and for all of our students. So a thank you to Lee Health in working and sponsoring to bring this here, and a thank you to our counselors and to Lori Brooks and Mary Lynn Rodriguez for being the liaisons of getting the speakers where they needed to go. Ms. Fisher.
Okay, so I want to piggyback on that, because that was the one thing I did forget that was on my list. Last night, I attended the Minding Your Mind community conversation, so many of the providers who are ready to partner with schools were there, and I want to thank Dr. Creel and Lori Brooks for responding when Kristin reached out to Dr. Pruitt and myself about coming, having the presenters come to schools, and it was so successful the first day that the presenters have agreed to stay for another day, and they'll be working some more schools tomorrow. I hope to be at South Fort Myers High, because I'm really interested in seeing the students' responses. But it's very powerful, and it's very timely in relation to our safety and security, because mental health is, impacts our physical health, impacts academics, and is part of our total health. So if we can help kids work through some of those struggles by collaborating and cooperating and being there. You know, our school counselor is the most educated person on staff. They have the most hours, graduate hours. Margaret Sariani was a school counselor before she became a dean. So I think that as we begin to implement more of the people, using the people who have special training to identify issues and to be able to intervene and make appropriate referrals, I think that will be very helpful to us as a district. And I was grateful that we got to be the place that they came. So thanks to Lee Health for putting their dollars up front and into our students. Yes, thank you.
Mr. Martin?
Yes, just one matter of clarification on the sales tax issue, which was raised for discussion this afternoon. If the board decided that it did wish to share a portion of the proceeds of the sales tax with the City of Cape Coral to support the operation of their charter schools, that would require the city to identify a project, which would then need to become part of the project list, so that project list would have to be amended for it to become part of the referendum. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. Dr. Atkins?
Just a couple of things on safety and security, and I can certainly cover some of this this evening as well, to consider it kind of a two-part report. The first, since you just mentioned the project list, one of the things that we are doing relative to safety and security in our schools is Mr. Moore and his team are in the process of updating that list to reflect an increased emphasis on safety and security. We had a, we had a meeting today, in fact, with the team, Mr. Demming, Mr. Cody, Lauren was there, Mr. Dodik, and, you know, we're, he's going, we increased the priority in terms of actually going out and doing an assessment, a professional assessment of our schools relative to those needs. For example, if you look at some of our single-point entry, that's always been a district priority, but this certainly gives us an opportunity, I think, to jump those up on the project list. So he's working to do that. And in addition to that, you know, we are continuing to work on that list to add technology. Mr. Davis gave me a really interesting presentation that I think I should share with you in terms of how to use technology and building plans in terms of placement of cameras, and he's already working with the team to really produce some significant cost savings around cameras by exploring options that are out there today that our team had originally not been aware of. So he's already making a big dent in that area. Speaking of the project list, another request that I made was, this is a little bit off the safety and security piece, but we want to go back and make sure that our career academies and our technical colleges are reflected on that list. You know, we've been out talking.
Exactly.
For the last two years, we want to see expansion there, and we do, we are going to try to get to the Horizon Council and talk about some of these efforts as we do half penny, and that's some, a portion of it that I'm sure that they'll be very, very interested in hearing a little bit more about. So that's a part of the project list. Moving on to some of the things on safety and security, did have, did speak with Colonel Smith last night, and we're working right now on a meeting that will be taking place between us and law enforcement in the very near future, very, very near future. So we'll get more details out about that when it happens, but that's going to be around Senate Bill 7026 and the implementation of that. Have to commend Mr. Dodik and Lauren Stillwell working on some speaking points to try to boil down that legislation into some of our, you know, the things that we need to start working on immediately. I've signed Mr. Demming to that task, so a lot of that, he's already jumping out on, jumping out in front of, so that hopefully when we onboard our new safety and security director, which hopefully, we hope, Dr. Pruitt's going to do a job offer real soon, so we hope to be successful there and bring someone onboard in the very near future in that capacity, who does have, I think, extensive experience in this area, to start working on implementing this bill as well. We are still going through it. We're going to work with the sheriff and the sheriff's department in terms of portions of the response to it, because obviously it does put some of that on the sheriff's department, and we've been excellent partners with them, so we look forward to making that, you know, making that a priority. In addition to that, Mr. Demming and our operations team are working on, you know, threat assessments for our building, and there's really kind of two-prong approach here. You're looking at the building itself, and then you're looking at the human beings within the building, so they're working on that right now as we speak. And we have already, as you know, been involved with discussions with both the Fort Myers Police Department and the Sheriff's Department in terms of increasing the number of SROs in our buildings. So that's, those are talks that are ongoing, but will certainly continue in light of this new piece of legislation. There is a heightened... There is a heightened sense of awareness in all of our buildings that, which is actually, you know, a, a good thing, I believe, because that is something we, we emphasize all the time when we get in front of principals, but when you have, unfortunately, a tragedy like this that occurs, it, it, it really, I think, underscores that point. Lastly, it was mentioned that we are talking with our, our students, so we talked about the walkout and the, and discussions that we're having with our students. Our intention as a school district is to have a regular school day, with regular, regular routines, and we have our code of conduct, so we're going to be consistent in the enforcement of our code of conduct. There is, you know, there is latitude in terms of school principals, and I know they're working with their school student bodies in terms of how can we make a difference in terms of safety and security in our building. And then, so they are doing that, different things at different schools are occurring in terms of something that staff and students are, are working together on. And then we, as a district, we were, we were so, so very much impressed with, you know, I, I told the group of kids that came and spoke, I said, "It's always nice to, to, when you get shown up by, by students." You know, they're much more articulate and compelling than you are.
Poppy on the spot.
But it just makes you feel good in this position to see those kids get out and, and speak passionately. So we had representatives from every one of our high schools and, and special centers, like Lamp was, was also represented. Benita Springs High School, brand-new school, you know, high school was also there. And this kid spoke very passionately about, about what they can do as a, as a community of students to make a difference. And so we have agreed to continue to work with our students to do something as Lee County, to make this a more safe and, and secure environment for our kids and our community. And, you know, one of the things I told the kids, I said, "You, you have the public attention right now, and, you know, you, you can certainly make a difference. There's people in this very room that can make a difference when it comes to this issue right now, today." And then they pointed out to us that, one of the students got up and said, "You know, we kids are not good at organizing ourselves, we're good at speaking to the point, but we're not very good at organizing, so we would love for you all to help us do that." And, and so we are, are going to happily do that. So we're going to convene a second meeting for that particular group. And, and I look forward to that group coming up with something really, really big and really meaningful, so it's not just a simple, you know, a protest or walkout, and then it's over and done with, but something that really makes a difference moving on in the future. That's what they wanted to do. They didn't want this one shot, not really make a difference, but they want to do something to really, really, really make a difference. Mrs. Morgan mentioned student advisory, another group of students, we didn't get near the time for the discussion, because it was almost an hour and a half with the first group. That group, because of the gifted presentation, we had very little time to talk, and, and believe me, unlike you all, that group holds me to a time limit.
[laughing]
So I was cut off at the appropriate time, and I was told, "I have one other item on the agenda, and thank you very much, and you're dismissed." So, so, but I will be going back to that, I will be going back to that committee, and I'm, I'm sure they will have a lot to, to help in terms of this issue as well. You would, I know you are very proud of, of our students, as am I, and they certainly make us proud with what, how they carry on, how they carry themselves in these meetings. So that's all that I have for my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Atkins. Thank you, board. Thank you, staff, for all that you do, and we will see all of you back here at 5:45.
Well, we want to do Good of the Order.
Oh, Good of the Order. I am so sorry, I am on a roll. I'm sorry. Is there anything for Good of the Order?
I sent the board members an email just saying that I thought this would be an opportune time to revisit the conversation about our protocol and what we talk about at what meetings. And just to make it easy, I made a list. Thank you. What we talk about, and what we don't, what we didn't put in the protocol. Are you putting paper in front of me?
I am.
And what, because I didn't, I didn't get this, I worked on this this afternoon before the meeting. What we didn't put in the protocol is upcoming school events and upcoming community events. And I basically understood that from our conversation as the sticking point in, thanks, in, you know, what we were talking about on protocols, so. And, and what I tried to do is indicate where, if we don't get to an item, if there's a backup. So for example, if the, if we fail to report on the board advisory committees, our, our report on the board advisory committees at the briefing, the backup is the website minutes. If we don't get to a request for agenda items at the briefing meeting, memo to the board or superintendent is fine. If we don't request, make that request for information at the briefing meeting, again, a member of the superintendent per, per board protocol. So that's it, that's what I see. Did I miss anything? I guess in terms of topics would be the first question.
Thank you for the delineation. It allows us to have good conversation.
Yeah, so with school and community visits, so we hold, hold that for once a month?
According to the current protocol, yes.
Or when our briefing meetings are.
Well, yes, and essentially, Dr. Atkins is running a once-a-month workshop, once-a-month briefing, so that's essentially how I looked at this.
That's the one thing that probably has changed. The schedule for, for quite a while had been that twice a month, we had briefing meetings and workshops were done at a separate time as regards to a board workshop. So we, so I, I hear what you're, I, I understand, I think, what you're, I'm reading between the lines, and so I, I am making, I'm drawing a conclusion here, that maybe we might want to think about when we, at the other monthly meeting, that we used to have the two briefing meetings where it's a workshop. Are you wondering, maybe we could include some time to share out those, a visit or something at that time? Am I, so that's, I'm throwing that out as a question, is that what you're, we're thinking of, Mary? I mean, Ms. Fisher?
No, that's not what I was thinking of. I, I know that the protocols are a guideline, and that they are not policy. So I, I'm thinking that we, depending on the situation, we may need to build in some room for flexibility, that's all I'm thinking.
And how, okay, so my question then would be, how might that be done so that everyone is comfortable with the flexibility? Possibly asking at the briefing meeting, or sending an email out, something where we let other board members know that there is something that we would like to share at the regular action meeting? How do we, how do we go about that? Ms. Morgan?
Well, see, my problem, my issue is, I'm comfortable with the once-a-month visits, because I think what we convey with the once-a-month visits is, particularly to staff, and to a certain extent to schools, what it is that we've seen that has either impressed us or concerned us in terms of what we want to discuss going forward. So I don't see the need to do it on, on a, other, other than a monthly basis. I think what concerned me when I thought about it and listened to what Ms. Fisher had to say, was that she was looking for a venue for upcoming school events and upcoming community events. And, and we don't have a, a venue for that. And, you know, I would be happy to put something on the website, or run a streamer underneath the meeting or whatever, but, I, I mean, I, I have a bunch of different ideas, but that, my sense was that that was, that was the big concern, that we're not talking about what's happening.
Yeah, and I think schools advertise their upcoming events. I was only thinking in terms of those things that are district-wide issues, and that more than one school might be attending, or it may be well-attended by other public people, you know, so that's, that was it. And I think that, I'm fine with this.
A sample of that, I guess, would be Drug House Odyssey. That's a community-held event, but there-
Directly involves our students.
And indirectly involves our students, and it affects our community. So I do see value in that there are some times that we, we may want to make that a very public thing, which happens if the action meeting is more public, as people are more aware of that at action meetings than they are briefing meetings. Ms. Morgan?
So I just had an idea. You know, at the end of the, the board action meeting, when you say the next meeting of the board is blah, 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 you know, whatever, why couldn't we say, why couldn't we have a list of-
Yes.
Drug, Drug House Odyssey is doing thus and such and such and such today.
Where you announce the next meetings and upcoming events.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Exactly.
And what people should do is just send to Susan a list of things that are community-related, that impact our students, date, time, place, and whoever's running the meeting can just say, you know, here you go. How does, yes, sorry.
Two things strike me, Dr. Carlin, I've been on some of the school websites lately, and some of them have change for change on there, and some of them do not. Just, I know it has nothing to do with what we're talking about, but I thought about it. I, I, have I told you about the picture I have in my kitchen of the little girl with the arm around the elephant?
Uh-uh.
Where reminding my whole family to always address the elephant in the room? The elephant in the room here is that I'm, I've been pretty insistent upon making sure we follow protocols at action meetings. And the protocols bear out what we've been working on. Dr. Atkins, what is your impression of this board over the past year as compared to other boards you've worked with?
Well, I think I've, I've been pretty clear. I mean, this, this school board has been pretty fantastic to work with, a very professional board. It is very strong in, in its advocacy, and I think that our district school staff and community has, has taken notice of that. When I go out and talk to not only just community groups that, that talk about this board, but also our teachers and administrators, I think that the comments and the professionalism, the advocacy on the part of the school district and kids has been noticed.
And that, that's despite the fact that we're not going on and on and on at action meetings in our comments. I think that perhaps it's because of that. You know, when, when we're all responding to public comment, when we're all being emotional in our comments at an action meeting, it, it sort of allows us to get off track of what the job is and what it's supposed to be. I'm sorry?
Did you miss what she just offered?
What?
The only one-
No, no, I know, I know, I'm addressing the elephant in the room. The reason why this was brought up in the first place. The reason why this was brought up in the first place is there's frustration over what we can and cannot say at action meetings. Am I, am I wrong? Is that not the elephant in the room? Isn't that the elephant in the room?
No, I think it's two that weren't addressed, I think.
Yes.
We just, we just didn't have any delineation as far as the two items that, I think Ms. Morgan's spent an inordinate amount of time showing what-
All right, and I, I misperceived an elephant.
Right.
That, I wasn't there. The last thing I want to say on this is, when we get to the end of an action meeting and it comes time for board comments, we have staff in the room who's been here since six, seven, or eight o'clock in the morning, and the last thing they want to hear, even though Dr. Atkins hangs on our every word, the last thing staff wants to hear is long reports from the board. So-
And the other elephant in the room is that this is a seven-member board, so I think the decision needs to be made by consensus.
And, and that's, that's what, that's, see, I can tell you're angry.
No, I'm not angry, I'm just saying.
And I, that's why I brought it up, so that we can have the discussion. These are our protocols, these are what we agreed to do. And I, I throw it out there and discuss it, because I, I think that following the rules, while they are guidelines, following the rules leads us in the right path.
And over time-
Leads us down the right path.
Right, and over time, as we've worked on protocols, those are guidelines, and they're a work in progress, subject to change and flexibility. That was also part of the agreement at the time. So I understand that when people were not there for that period of time, and that's fine, that you don't have that frame of reference. But I think that if we're going to be this stringent about it, then it needs to be a consensus of the whole, all, all members of the board that we're going to do that. And, and it's, it's a decision to be made as a group, that's all. And, and I'm not angry, no.
Oh, I'm sorry, that's what I'm getting from you.
And, and just one point. Protocol does say that we, you know, making a comments regarding things that happen with public speakers. And I think we do need to be judicial about how we address that. But we also need to respect each other, that if one of us needs to address something made, they do that, but it's not like how it was. But this is what makes us wonderful. And this is why everybody believes it. It has nothing to do with these meetings.
Okay.
That has to do with how they see us working as a team, and how we're all out there at the schools.
Point of order, I, I'm lost, and it's 4:30, we're an hour and a half behind our schedule.
That's why, but, on the public comment thing, at the very beginning of every meeting, we say that the board or the superintendent responds to public, not every board member.
At that time, and that the superintendent is going to be doing it later, but we'll, we'll talk about that. I agree with you, we're, we're done. I think we need to bring it, thank you, Ms. Morgan, and time is of the essence.
We're going to be excited about this after meeting, see, if we don't talk about it.
You know, we can't have meetings and go, "Oh, I have to..."